Close session under NCGS 1431811A3, Attorney Client Privilege Agreement with Settlement Solid Waste Provider, NCGS 14331811, Navajo Connection Project Acquisition of Property for Right-of-Way for Parcels 0710802, 5B, 07108027A, 07108027B, 07108021, 07108022, 07108023, 07108024. Okay. Once inside.
Yeah, I'll call for motion to go into close session?
I need to call for motion to go into close session.
Mr. Mayor, with the consent of the council, we would like Adam McLamb to join us for the solid waste portion and Todd Hunsinger for the right-of-way, please.
I was just getting ready to say that, Town Manager, but thank you. Thank you. Can I get a, can I get a motion?
I give a motion to close.
Go ahead, Tom.
I give a motion to go into close session.
Okay.
It's going to close. And then the motion to have first session is for confession.
Big pardon?
Can I get a motion to have Adam come into session one?
Well, like, we just did that, I thought. Town Manager just, okay, can we have a motion for Adam to come in the first, first, Adam McLamb?
First session.
And Todd Hunsinger to come in the second. Would you make that motion?
Yeah, I give a, a motion to have Adam McLamb come into the first session and Todd Hunsinger on the second session.
All in favor? Sorry. There we go. We're good.
Adam, if you'll come with us.
Unanimous.
And then you'll let him know when you come out. That would be great.
All right, listen.
So moved.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, now, let's hand, let's pound it one more time. All right, I'd like to open up the meeting tonight. Six-thirty meeting on the fourteenth of June. If everybody would rise, we're gonna have a, Parker is sitting right next to me, is gonna lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Parker, if you'll come around here, we'll step down here. Come on. Face the flag. Turn around and you start us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Parker. Let's, everybody stay, stay standing and, for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Just to let you know who Parker is, Parker, with her school, they had a fundraising there and one of them was to shadow the mayor. And today, she is shadowing the mayor and she's gonna stay with us just for a little while today. And she's already got to go through the building today and do numerous things. And I think, hopefully, she's enjoyed it. And she's been a joy to have here today. So, anyway, she's gonna stay and watch a couple more things and then her dad, Logan, is in the crowd and it's gonna be, I guess, bedtime sometime here for you. So, okay. Call the meeting to order. Let's see, the first thing, do pledge allegiance, let's do any additions or deletions. Do I have any additions or deletions? Don't we have a, an addition? Kathy?
Yes, it's on the agenda and the council members need to read that, please.
We need a, can I get somebody to add that?
Yes, sir. We're gonna add item meetings in July and August. Then we're gonna delete item 4A, the Graham Marshall Recognition. It's postponed until June twenty-eighth meeting.
Very good. Does everybody got that? Can I get, now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we got some presentations to do tonight. Is Jerome here tonight? Jerome, hold on one second. Jerome, I want you to come up here. I just wanna, I wanna read your, read what you've got here and also, Jerome, you know, you're famous in Indian Trail. Everybody knows who Jerome is, especially everybody that lives on the Monroe roadside of Indian Trail. And I was not fortunate, I live on the other side of Indian Trail, so I didn't get to see you out there every morning, but I've heard a lot about you and I've heard a lot of great things about you. And for more than twenty years of service as a crossing guard at Sun Valley Middle School, and not only keeping children safe, but bringing joy to the community. And I've read about you on What's Up, Indian Trail, about how, what you do in the road and how you make people smile in the morning. And it's hard making a lot of people smile in the morning, I tell you. It's, it's not something that we always all wanna do. So, Jerome, I'd like for you to come up and we'd like to give you a certificate of recognition and come up and get your plaque. And if the council would like to step down here, it'd be an honor to get our picture made with you, Jerome. Here, I need to go. Hey, man, how you doing? Good. Here's your plaque, come on, step right here. It's got solid.
Can you see Parker?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Got everything.
We don't want you to retire. He, he's outside my community every morning during school year, of course, and just a joy, man. We love you.
I'm free after thirty years without being pissed.
You don't want me here to probably get knocked over. You got anything you wanna say, Jerome?
Speech.
No. I just appreciate your pain and it's like, I just hope y'all have one time when it's done.
Forty years, I mean. God bless you, sir.
Next, we have new business, physical therapy. Is Jen here? Oh, there you are, Jen. Jen, in, in its house, its haw.
It's haws, like haws.
Hawes, right. And I know I missed, I said that wrong the first time and your husband corrected me and told me it was haws and not haws.
I just married the guy, so I'm honest.
Come on up and tell us about yourself. Tell about your business.
Okay. So, is this, okay, here we go. So, hi, everybody. So, the mayor very kindly invited me to come and speak to everybody. I live in Waxahachie and my business is an Indian Trail. I just opened a physical therapy by Jen in February of this year and I just am overwhelmed by the warm welcome by the Indian Trail community. People are just fantastic. I've been doing this for twenty-four years and after working for other people, decided to do it on my own to really give patients the quality care they need and deserve. So, I'm a cash-based practice, so people can use their HFSA cards. Otherwise, it's check, cash, or whatever, but, or card. And the reason I did that is because insurances unfortunately are reimbursing less and less, so you get kind of a factory feel sometimes with physical therapy. So, you get an hour of one-on-one care with me and I specialize in patients with chronic pain and pelvic floor dysfunction, which I feel are two diagnoses that are very much underlooked by the medical community. So, I have a lot of hands-on skills that I employ as well as cutting-edge neuroscience that is really, really making a huge difference in the world of chronic pain. So, I am located right in the Bonterra neighborhood, next to someone else on the council, maybe. And it's just a wonderful, it's a wonderful neighborhood and then we have a little commercial strip where we have several businesses and I am one of them. So, I'm just, I feel blessed to be a part of the Indian Trail community and I think my moving out here as well might be a good idea. So, yeah.
Good, we'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions at all? Jen, I appreciate you coming and also, you know, I got to see grand opening there that day. And if you're, come into Bonterra, it's right in the middle, it's right in front of the swimming pool, right in the live-work area. And I wish you all luck and well. I think you're gonna do, do really well. So, we have a plaque to give you here and welcome you to town. Does anybody wanna come up and have their picture made or, come on? Come on, Parker. Parker's.
Here, ten bucks, ten bucks. You were not, thank you.
You're right here, Parker.
Yeah, that's, excuse me, that's your. Hold on, me, okay. Done. All right, everybody ready?
Jen, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
She does. That brings us to Ace Hardware. Is the store manager Stephen Wash here and district manager Tim Upton?
Tim's stuck in Columbia.
Come on up, fellas. Tell us a little bit about your business and glad to have you.
You're all familiar with Ace Hardware, right down the road. I could've walked here. Tim, like I said, is stuck in Columbia with another store. The owner of the business is Darren. He's got now fourteen stores, ace stores between North, South Carolina, Tennessee, and Georgia. We've been at this location about a year now and it's growing pretty well. And people, you know, were a little hesitant at first when it went from Indian Trail to Ace, before it was Ace. But it's going along.
Very good. Well, I'd say it's great to have you and it is great to have you, but we're so used to it being there, it's been there for so many years. And we're just happy it's still there and it is a little different and, you know, a lot of people go to Lowe's, but people can come and do, more or less a family-owned type business, to come to Ace Hardware. And we're just glad you're here and I hope you're here for a long time. And if there's anything the town can do for you, you know, we're not far down the road, you're not down here.
You can throw a ball here.
There you go. Good deal. Well, let's, let's give you your plaque, appreciate you coming and Parker, come on, let's go. Anybody else wanna come down and get your picture made? Come on, Parker. I gotta say, this is fun. I enjoy it. I'm gonna start bringing my grandkids, is that okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Our next item is two presentations on agency donation requests. And one of the things you may want to do on that is if you wanna waive your two-year policy, and I think traditionally what you've done is you've gotten a presentation like one meeting and then made the decision the following meeting. So, if the council chooses to waive that, you know, we just need a motion and a vote to waive the policy.
Okay.
I make a motion to waive the policy for agency donation.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to Poplin School PTA, is Elizabeth Perry, Elizabeth? There you are, I didn't see you in the back of the room.
Well, it's exciting to be here when Parker's here. Parker is actually from our school, so we're so excited to see you. I picked a perfect night to come. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for having me. I'm Elizabeth Perry, I'm the Poplin Elementary School PTA president, going on my third, my third year. I don't know how that happened in a two-year commitment, but I am here to ask you guys for a donation. Melissa Bowman was a longtime employee of Poplin Elementary School. She was our data manager. She also was our crossing guard, so she and Jerome would've had a lot in common. And she has been part of UCS for over twenty years. She's been part of Union County for over thirty years, she was a hairstylist in the area also. When COVID started and hit, unfortunately, Melissa was one of the first people that I knew that actually had COVID and fought a really hard fight and unfortunately lost her battle to COVID. The school would like to do something in a memorial form for her. If you ever want entertainment, just pull up at Poplin Elementary School in the morning as the kids are coming in and they're riding their bicycles and the parents are walking next to them and, you know, they're just, nobody looks happy. And when they finally get to school, then those parents realize they either have to ride those bikes home or they have to carry them over their shoulders. And if you didn't think they were happy on the way in, they're really not happy on the way out. So, we thought what better way to honor Melissa would be with bicycle racks at the school because we don't have any. So, we were asking for a donation for bicycle racks to be installed at Poplin so the kids can actually ride in, in the mornings.
Any questions?
I don't got no questions.
Okay.
I wanna add a little bit to this, if, I hope the council looks at this. My, both my wife and daughter knew her very well. My, my daughter went to Poplin Elementary School and, when the first year it opened. And also, she was a student teacher there from Porter Ridge High School. And my wife knew her also very well and she wasn't just an employee.
Yeah, no.
She was great.
She was.
She was. So, she, I think it means a lot to the school and I think it means a lot to her. Will her name be, be on?
It will. We're gonna have a plaque made that'll be installed and we'll actually do a dedication ceremony that'll include her family and then anybody who she touched as part of the school. So, I would imagine we'd have a huge turnout.
She was loved.
She was amazing. So, she's, she left a hole and we miss her a lot.
Yeah, she did. And I wanna just, and I know you didn't ask for this, I know you've done this for three years and you've done marvelous.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. We appreciate all your support, too.
I appreciate the privilege to get to come up there and be invited up there and I've just.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
For what all you do.
Thank you.
So, with that being said, do I get a motion?
Can I make, can I make a comment, sir?
Sure.
My hand was up, but you didn't look.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Parker.
Elizabeth, I've known you for quite some time since you've been there. Appreciate you serving again on the PTA, it was your second go-around. We do appreciate that. I also, I actually know Ms., or knew Ms. Bowman as well. My kid started at Poplin when it first opened. I'm still, I still have a kid going there today, so I've been there for quite some time. And I know, I remember that moment when, you know, word got out and we had to tell our kids, you know, just that Ms. Bowman was no longer here. So, I think the bike rack is gonna mean a lot to the kids who come to the school, especially those who live close by who ride to the school. Also, Captain James, on the days when you guys have the bike, the bike to school or ride to school like you had earlier this year, that would serve as a good way to kinda have the bikes there instead of having them all the way on the ground, so do appreciate that.
I may need about five hundred more though, if we do that. I may be able to get about twenty.
But, but we do thank you for all the work that you do.
Absolutely, thank you.
We know that as volunteers, how hard you guys work to kind of fill the void that, that exists.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we make a one thousand dollar donation to the Poplin Elementary PTA.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay. We got a motion for a thousand dollar donation, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
And you're doing a great job, Parker.
We had twenty-five hundred, at least fifteen hundred, right, Mr. Waterwich? Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the VTSB, Back to School Bash, Robin Barron-Globish. Come on up, Robin.
Close enough, you're almost really good. Hi, my name is Robin Barron-Globish and I am part of the Back to School Bash. This was established back in two thousand and fourteen, right up the road at Extreme Ice. And now we are at Carolina Courts. We're really excited to go back inside the building and create a shopping adventure for the kids where they get to pick their bookbag, the color, and all the contents that go in it. So, having a shopping adventure is a big deal to these kids and to be able to select their own items, which we are thrilled to do. We have served over fifteen thousand students to date, to date. And this is for some underprivileged children, maybe some parents that need some extra cushioning, helping getting established for the new school year. COVID had a lot to do with a lot of these students participating in this event and we are still very grateful and thankful for it. We're able to provide each of the students who pre-register sneakers, they get their feet washed and we give them a new pair of sneakers. And again, these students need to pre-register for this event. That way, we can at least order the size that they're asking for, but we always get extras, so if they miscalculate on a size. We are just really excited. At the end of each term when we have supplies left over, school people and PTA people, where'd our girl go? If she, if folks participate, you know, that are involved with the school, they get to take school supplies back to their students. So, it becomes a shopping adventure for teachers that do put some skin in the game for that. And extra supplies, we do get to the Title I schools and they do benefit from the supplies. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
What date is the event?
Oh, I'm sorry. August the seventh is the date of the event. It's from one to three. We are partnering again with different organizations. Indian Trail Lions Club is going to be conducting free vision screening for these children. That way, they get to, if they determine that they need eye exams, they get sent to that, to a doctor and, and if funding is an issue, they, they support that, too. So, we're really proud with our Lions Club, our Rotary Club, and all the different organizations that truly support this amazing organization. And I am here with a bunch of awesome people and we've been together as directors and cohorts in this event and we're just, we believe in this. And if we didn't have any money, we would figure out a way to make it happen because it is, it's worth it. I don't have children, I've never given birth to children. I see what parents put into this, to a child going to school and, and I'm on the board and I feel very compelled to help these kids and to have that level playing field to be able to start school just like any other kid. They deserve it. And they truly do, they really do. And to have their own items, brand-new, they're not feeling inferior to other students and we just wanna make everyone equal.
Very good. And I just wanna say, Robin, that to all of you, all of you and Robin, thank you for what you're doing. I mean, it's, you do it out of the kindness and of your heart and, and you're good people and the world needs more of you and I really, bottom of my heart, admire you and am very thankful for people like you. So, I'm glad and I actually, we didn't have a Title I school. I don't think when I went to school, it wasn't listed as a Title I school. The elementary school that I went to is a, is now a Title I school, so I really appreciate what y'all do.
I grew up not having a bookbag. I didn't, I thought, I thought bookbags were for rich kids and I didn't have one until I went to college, folks, college, the first time around. And it's just amazing that these kids are, were able to do that for these kids. You know, we carried our bookbags and our bags in brown paper bags with handles. I don't know if any of you, they didn't even have handles to them. But back in the day, that's what we did and we made do with what we needed. And for that, I hear that you have fifteen hundred dollars left. So, I would like to make a motion.
I've earned a T-shirt. Hey, he's in Rotary back there, Mr. Osho Books. We wanna see him getting a shirt, too, now.
We'll get you a shirt, we'll get you a shirt, I promise.
There you go. Hey, she's good at getting people to volunteer, been there, done that. But anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we give a fifteen hundred dollar donation to the Back to School Bash.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Awesome, thank you. I wanna give you guys a hug, but I wanna, I wanna give our little assistant a hug. May I give you a hug? Is it okay, Dan?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
But you can say anything, that's okay. Congratulations, sweetheart. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, sir.
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is Parker voting with us as well? Because you said unanimous, I wanna know if Parker's raising a hand on the votes.
I think Parker's about ready to leave.
Parker, you wanna say bye to everybody?
Yes. Parker would go down, just go down the line and, and maybe give them all a high five as you go down the.
Thank you, Parker.
Parker, it was a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Dad.
Thank you for bringing her. Parker, we loved having you.
Bye-bye.
Oh, yeah, your buddy, too. He's giving her money today.
But she didn't ask for any money.
Shouldn't I read it for the other public comments? Okay. All right, we don't have any public comments tonight, so we'll skip both general comments and council comments and we'll go straight to law enforcement agreement. Captain James?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The, you've got the reports for the month of May there in front of you. Just real brief, a couple things I wanted to point out. Two hundred and twenty-seven total reportable incidents in the month of May. That's up from April slightly, trending toward those being a, or the breaking and entrants of the vehicles again. With, I'd just like to remind our citizens to please lock your door, lock your car doors every time you get out and take everything you can out of the car, if anything of value's in there. It's really hard for us to pursue people that steal things out of cars when they're left unlocked. It's just, we're having really good luck and, but we're getting rashes of them and they're coming from out of town to do it. So, your property, getting the, the likeliness of getting property back is slim to none when it leaves the county. So, just like to make them aware of that. Five hundred and sixty-one business checks, three thousand seven hundred and forty preventative patrols in our neighborhoods. On the crash side, our crashes are still, are trending up, one hundred and thirty-three for total in the month of May, but we still are holding that steady line at the injuries of twenty, even though we're having that jump in the total number of crashes. And then six thousand five hundred and fifty-nine total calls for service in the month of May. But jumping back to the crashes for a minute, I'm gonna talk to you about the two grant guys, traffic grant guys, and just to kinda let you know what they're doing and how they're working. Those two officers in the month of May made five drug arrests, two DWI arrests, two fugitive arrests, and then recovered one stolen vehicle that wasn't from the town of Indian Trail. But along those lines, with just that, they had four hundred and fifty-three total traffic violations that recited in the town of Indian Trail. So, that's two guys working in the month of May, had over four hundred traffic charges and were still, accidents are still going up. So, please, just please be careful. Take a second and breathe, slow down, especially around these intersections. And if something is simple as backing out of a parking space in a parking lot somewhere, take an extra second to look again, look twice before you start moving. It seems like the simplest things are causing these crashes, but one injury is too many for me, so I wanna get that not injury number down. And the only way to do that is with enforcement and we're trying, they really are trying. So, I'd be glad to take any except, or any questions you have, but that's all I've got for you tonight.
Any questions? Mr. Barber?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand the county approved the crime lab for the sheriff's office.
They sure did.
Last night.
Sure did, got the crime lab. The council sees fit in this budget adding that crime scene investigator here as well. Some of that will be coming here full-time. One, whoever that crime scene officer is here in Indian Trail will be doing for digital forensics on telephones out of this office as well as some of the other attributes that 'll be working in that lab out of Wingate. So, this is another resource for us.
I understand they approved five new school resource officers.
School resource officers. They were looking at, my understanding now, and don't, don't quote me on this, they were looking at a higher number, but adding that many people at one time is tough, especially in the situation we're in now where we're having trouble getting equipment and finding cars, it's just, you know, having a situation. But we are trying and they are trying to engage, especially the lower-level schools, the primary schools, a lot more than they were in the past.
I know we track response time a lot and I know you talk about seventy-four being split and additional officers, so I appreciate that. I have one kudos for you, though. I was.
So I want to get that not injury number down. And the only way to do that is with enforcement. And we're trying. They really are trying. So I'd be glad to take any except, or any questions you have, but that's all I've got for you tonight.
Any questions? Mr. Barber?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand the county approved the crime lab for the sheriff's office.
They sure did.
Last night.
Sure did got the crime lab. The council sees fit in this budget, adding that crime scene investigator here as well. Some of that will be coming here full-time. One, whoever that crime scene officer is here in Indian Trail will be doing for digital forensics on telephones out of this office, as well as some of the other attributes that will be working in that lab out of Winkett. So this is another resource for us.
I understand they approved five new school resource officers.
School resource officers. They were looking at, my understanding now, and don't, don't quote me on this, they were looking at a higher number, but adding that many people at one time is tough, especially in the situation we're in now, where we're having trouble getting equipment and finding cars. It's just, you know, having a situation. But we are trying, and they are trying to engage, especially the lower-level schools, the primary schools, a lot more than they were in the past.
I know we track response time a lot. And I know you talk about seventy-four being split and additional officers, so I appreciate that. I have one kudos for you, though. I was at the county commissioner meeting a couple of weeks ago, and after, there were some, some of Union County's finest deputies there. And, and your name came up, and they were talking about the Indian Trail Division. And they said, I don't know what's going on up there, but everybody we hire or we train and we send up there loves it. And I thought that was a sense of pride for us. And I thought that was one of the best things anybody can do is create a great work environment. And I just want to say thank you. I said, I thought that was one of the best testament is to get it from other people who weren't here, who were already looking in. So I, I, that's just an awesome job.
Well, I appreciate that. But it's got nothing to do with me, it's the people they're sending me. I'm going to tell you, I've got, and I love Chase Koble to death, but I'm going to tell you, I've got the best groups ever been in Indian Trail, that's ever worked up here. And especially the young guys and girls that were getting up here that want to work, they want to engage the community, and they want to be out here just like with Ms. Parker. They want to play with the kids. And if they want to do that and get out of their car and talk to people, I love them. And they know it. So, and that's the kind of people we want.
Yeah, I was, Ma, I was curious about your fuel budget, how you guys hanging on with the current prices.
Oh, we're still doing good. We're trying to make some, a few changes. We have a tough time, partially because our patrol guys can't cut their cars off on their own shift. If they cut their cars off, it shuts the computers down in the car. And when they shut the computers down, when they get back in the car, rebooting takes some time. And it could take up to minutes when they need to jump in the car and go right then. But we're fine. As, as far as gas goes, we, even if we had a shutdown with anything or a shortage, we're still, have got, got things in the works that we're, we'll, we'll have gas to be able to provide protection, so that's not an issue.
Any other questions? Captain James, thank you.
I would like to point one other thing out, too, and I totally forgot it when I was telling you. The, we did take, I went to Atlanta on Tuesday, we took delivery of the new sign trailer that the council wanted, and the specialty vehicle, I went and picked it up today. Both have got to have some outfit done to them before they're ready. I was hoping we'd have that special vehicle done before the parade, but it's not going to happen, I don't, I don't think, unless they're just really, really fast. But the, I just wanted you to know they were on the ground. I never thought I'd see them before I left in December, but they're, they're both here. And we've got one, we got another big sign board on the way that should be here hopefully in the next couple of weeks. So things are coming together, and they're really doing good. And I appreciate, I, I can't tell you enough, and y'all know this, but I love this community and I love y'all for what you, what you do for us. And I appreciate that.
I actually thought that sign that was out there today might have been the, one of the new ones. They had one out.
That's the one that likes to say Merry Christmas on its own, in the middle of summer.
Okay, that's, so that's not it. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
All in favor? Unanimous. Brings us to public hearings. number three seventy-five, Ms. Deese.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. This is our first public hearing for the night, as the mayor mentioned, CZ 2022 0028 for Chestnut Lane subdivision. This is for conditional rezoning as well as an annexation. So this request is for approximately 25.4 acres to be rezoned from Union County R-20 to CZ single-family SF5 Indian Trail. The applicant is Polte Group, and their intent is to construct 57 single-family detached homes. The aerial displays here, that donut hole area, so you can see in the purplish is Stallings, this is Indian Trail, and then you've got this kind of grayed-out area, that's the county. And, and one of the goals that we've been after for several years now is closing up those donut holes. So thankful that the county did direct the developers our way. So it's outlined, the property is outlined in yellow. Here's photos of the existing site, along with our fancy rezoning sign. This is looking east and then west along Chestnut Lane. Existing zoning map, you can see the property is starred. There's a variety of Union County Stallings and Indian Trail surrounding it, but all residential within this area. Future land use displays the property outlined in yellow as medium-density residential. Just a few more details for you. This request, again, is 57 homes on 25.4 acres. Future land use is medium-density, and we're proposing a CZ SF5 rezoning. As you can see in the chart below, neighboring uses and districts are all medium-to-low density residential. And here's their concept plan, showing the outlay of the, the site. And I will note that the site has had some challenges with floodplain and access. Here are the architectural representations that the developer intends to build. We have a couple of samples here of different products that they'll mix into the subdivision. And this is the open space and the trail that will be included along in the development. As normal, county coordination will take place at site plane review. And this project is located on NC DOT roadway. They will have to install road improvements according to NC DOT. Due to the number of roads, this project did not warrant a traffic study, and the onsite parking, as you can see on the screen, was exceeded per the town requirements. We held two community meetings on April the 20th. We had ten citizens participate, and the comments included stormwater, flooding, drainage, traffic and safety, water pressure, and landscape buffers, trees and brooms. And the consistency statement. So this development is located within the Antioch Village Plan. The redevelopment is consistent with the future land use and medium-density residential use recommendations as stated in the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed plan will give the opportunity to establish a unique development in this area with common open space areas, a six-foot-wide sidewalk along Chestnut Lane, and a hard-surface greenway trail consistent with the comprehensive plan goals. So in summary, this is a reasonable request and is consistent with the comp plan by promoting multiple goals. We do have a fairly long list of conditions that we've applied to this project. We have those, if the council would like to go through each of those. Following the developer's presentation, public comment and discussion, I would like to note that our general order of approval, your action, is going to be modified a little bit. So you will approve the annexation, or deny the annexation, and then from there, you will approve or deny the rezoning, and then we'll do the consistency statements. It's a little bit different than we've normally done, but Ms. Cox is going to get us in line and get us straight, so I appreciate her, her efforts on that. Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Do we have any, any developer, do we have any developer, okay. Does anybody have any questions for the developer? I should have asked that before you came up. Anybody have any questions? No. Well, Brandy, don't go too far, because I may, we may have more, some questions for you, too. So, yes.
Did you open the public hearing?
Not yet. Okay. But we are going to open up the public hearings now. Do I need to read the, before we do the?
I would read that just before you open the public hearing.
Okay.
We actually have the Brandy and then the developer, whoever she has, contributing to the presentation, then we open the hearing if acceptable. Turn it off.
Yeah, we're doing things just a little different. That's fine.
That's fine, I'll get you a shirt.
I'll learn, we're learning through, so.
We do.
We have a different attorney, so we're, we're, we're doing things a little differently. But I'm happy to do them any way you want to do them.
Okay.
Okay? So I'll go ahead and, and, and read the, do we have any questions for the, we do not, do we? No questions? Okay. All right. And that, then we'll, that brings us to.
Wow, did you, did you present some?
Did you want to do a, okay.
He was going to speak, with, along with Brandy, he was going to give some comments.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good? You're good? All right. All right, these are town rules for addressing the Indian Trail Town Council. The rules were established by the Indian Trail Town Board and apply to public comment participants. As a reminder, they are read at each meeting before public comments are received. The board thanks you for sharing your thoughts and concerns. Please state your name and jurisdiction, jurisdiction where you pay taxes clearly for the record. Please elect a representative for multiple individuals having similar messages. Each speaker or representative will have three minutes to state their concerns. Comments could be directed to the entire board and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Please refrain from communication grievances regarding town staff in this form. We ask that you redirect those to the town manager. All documents submitted to the board become town property and may be available as requested. Anonymous general written public comments will be read. Regarding comments for public hearings, anonymous writings will be read. All other written public comments will be read for a restricted period of 20 minutes. After 20 minutes remaining, written comments will be noted as either opposing or supporting. Any speaker may be asked to discontinue or be disallowed to speak by the board if the rules are violated. And last, comments may be recorded and broadcast on the internet. Okay. Can I get a, a motion to open public comments?
Motion to open public comments.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. That brings us to Kim Stafford.
Her's is attached, if you would.
Beg your pardon?
Her comments are attached.
Oh, her comments are attached, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes. Dear IT Council, please slow down. This proposal is too much, too fast for one area. There are single-family homes, not even finished, yet directly across from the proposed area. Adding these in the mix is creating a bottleneck for the community. I live in Brookhaven and moved here six years ago on purpose, to avoid just the kind of congestion and overpopulation so common in Charlotte and other cities. Totally understand the enticements of development for the town, taxes, et cetera, but adding this many homes is actually taking away from the enticement of, of this area. We want some empty land, green spaces, cows, and fields. I want to be able to be in our yard in the evenings and not hear car horns and other traffic sounds. Please listen to your current residents and slow down and deny the proposal. Kim Stafford. Please excuse typos. Okay. All right. Brings us next to, is it Marlene Thompson?
Yes.
Come on up, Marlene.
My name is Marlene Ferguson Thompson, and my family has owned this property on Chestnut Lane for nearly 71 years. As a newly discharged Army veteran and newlywed, my parents bought this property because they wanted their children to live in the country. Daddy always said, buy dirt. They're not making any more of it. And that's what he did. Slowly, our surrounding neighbors began selling their farms, but Daddy hung on. He raised cows, pigs, had huge vegetable gardens. More neighbors sold their farms. Ed Wright, Doc Kaziah, Hall Long. Those names may mean nothing to you, but that's where Fair Forest, Red Barn Trail, Callan Wood, and Brookhaven now rest. Daddy understood that even though he wasn't happy with all the new neighborhoods, that was progress, and one day we'd need to sell two. Daddy passed away in 2002, and we've held out as long as we can. With all the new developments, land values have soared. And with the recent tax reevaluations, our annual taxes are now 10 times the amount he paid for the entire 26 acres. We realize that some of the residents would like to have trees, green spaces, cows and chickens as neighbors. But I can't afford to pay for those. We are selling not because we want to, but because we simply can no longer afford to stay. We have worked very hard to find the right developer who will leave you with something we are proud to have been part of. Working with the builder, the plan has lots of wooded spaces and a nature trail. This neighborhood will be an asset to the town of Indian Trail. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. That brings us to Christie, is it? Brookard?
Brookard.
Brookard? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Christie Brookard, and I live in Brookhaven, and my property backs to Chestnut Lane, which, that is why I'm here. I, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of all the construction that has happened over the last three years, but we bought our property in March of 2019. And this is what has happened since I have moved in. Now, keep in mind, we came from Kansas City, we looked for the best house that we could find. It was beautiful, the drive-in, it was all great, peaceful. We have the best backyard that we, we, we've ever had. Just beautiful, proud to be in North Carolina. And over the last three years, this is what's happened to us. So Walden at Austin Village has 50 homes. Chestnut Farms Apartments went in at the, at the end of Chestnut Lane, and it has 256 units. They're one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. We were told at the time it was going to be one and two-bedroom apartments with some shopping below for the residents to enjoy. But instead, for profitability, of course, they changed it to one, two, and three. They've added Grace One Church. This is all on a two-and-a-half-mile stretch. This is a small road with two lanes. Harper's Run is going in. It's 108 townhome sites consisting of three-bedroom units. Ambriant at Austin Village is 80 units, 66 apartments and 14 duplexes. The courtyards on Chestnut Lane are being built right now. They're 27 ranch homes, and they are directly across from what is getting ready to be proposed and be built. And then right, just, I mean, I'm guessing, an eighth of a mile is our exit to get out of our neighborhood, which is also where my house is, to get out. And the, the traffic has increased. When you pull out, you wait and wait, especially in the morning. You sit there and wait and wait and wait, and you're trying to find a safe way to pull out. I have two young drivers. There are a lot of people with a lot of kids. And in three years, the amount of growth is, it's out of control. And I don't, my, my, when I sit in my backyard now, I used to sit in my backyard, and yeah, you know, 8:00 AM, the, you could hear the traffic, people going to school or whatever. Now, it doesn't matter what time of day it is, I hear these big, heavy trucks. We, we hear commotion. Kim Stafford that sent in a letter, she's one of my neighbors, and she doesn't even back up. And when she's in her backyard, all we hear is traffic, traffic, traffic. When I bought my home, it was beautiful. The, the area is beautiful, that's what we bought. The traffic is, is a huge concern. I understand why she's wanting to sell her property value. We're all shocked at where our property value is. But I don't, I am asking you to please consider not rezoning, keeping it, I don't know why we need 57 houses. This is one other thing I wanted to add. So if each new res, so, okay, in three years, a total of 521 new residents, two more seconds, have been added, if each new resident only had one driver that left their house one time a day, this would be 1,042 new drivers that pass my house every day in three years. You add another 57 homes, that's another 114 more people, and that number is low. So I'm looking at 1,200 people driving past my house in three years.
I'll let you speak for a little while longer.
Yeah, I'm good. I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Point that out because you guys are, are Indian Trail. We also compete with Stallings on Chestnut Lane. So Stallings is approving stuff, Indian Trail's approving stuff, and there's no continuity. And nobody's thinking about the people that already own their property.
You passed your three minutes, but thank you.
All right.
You set your, your.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just begging for you guys to slow down. Please consider us.
Okay. That's, can I get, can I close? Can we get a, somebody to close on public comments?
I'll make a motion to close public comments.
All in favor? Unanimous. So do we want to have discussion? Brandy, do you want to come back up here and, and talk to us, or, or no, we're done? Do we? Any, any, I have some questions, but.
Sure, go ahead.
My, my question to you would be. My question to you would be, this is county property, correct? It's not owned by, Indian Trail's not owned by Stallings, it's not owned by anybody. What is it zoned for now?
So it is zoned R-20, which is about 2.2 units to the acre. To summarize it, this project could lose a few units and go develop by right in the county without having to go through rezoning.
Okay. So how many homes would be able to go there at 2.2 homes per acre? Does anybody?
Within a unit or two.
We're at 2.2.
I got my mathematician in the back. 55.8.
55.8. And you're wanting to put 57?
57 is the proposal.
So it's about one-house difference, just about. All right. Next question would be, suppose, and this is a good, this is a question for all of us to, so if nothing's done at all, and they go to the county, they can build those houses, is that correct? Because it's already zoned for 2.2. So they go to the county, they're going to get these homes built, one less home built, is that correct?
Correct. And they would go straight in for site plan approval, full construction documents, and skip the rezoning process and the annexation process, of course.
And the only, the only difference in that, and I just want you to understand this too, is that Indian Trail doesn't get anything, although it is an Indian Trail, we don't get anything out of it. Now, it's going to get approved with one less house if it goes to the county. So I guess...
I've watched three years of just constant verbal slide.
Well, it's already approved. I mean, is it not already approved?
Right. By right development, and they actually, one thing that's of interest to the town planning staff personally is, you know, looking at the quality of the product. There wouldn't be any guidelines surrounding the county supplemental. So they could bring in a less superior product, reduce it down, you know, a unit or two, and go in by right.
And the only reason I bring this up is, it's not because I'm for or against or anything else, it's just the practicality of it. You know, the practicality of it is, is it's going to get built with one less house whether we approve it or not. So it makes no sense, and just in my opinion, not to approve it, because if we didn't approve it, they're going to get, they're going to approve it anyway. Does it make sense to you because it's already approved? Am I not stating this correctly? Go ahead, sure, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
I just had a question. The annexation, why is that so attractive? What does the builder benefit from it? You know?
I'll start that off, and then I'll let Weston finish. You remember, several years ago in 2019, the county and the towns came together. So one of the promises that the county made, and they've held that faithfully, is when a developer comes to the county, they direct them to the municipality. So that's kind of how they got started towards Indian Trail and Stallings, but I'll let them answer what entices them into annexing.
I think it's kind of simple. It's just people want to be a part of something. If you're in the county, you don't get the same type of service, and you're sitting right next...
Did you see that?
Yeah. If you're in the county, you don't get the same services you would inside the city, and I mean, overall, just people want to be a part of something. And if this was in the county, you have two cities right side by side, but you're not in either one of them type thing.
Ms. Thompson, I come from a long line of farmers, so, and I'm certainly glad I don't have to work my summers on a farm anymore. So the, you know, we've worked hard to establish a relationship with the county where when something's bordering Indian Trail, that they'll send it to us because if we denied something, there's also been cases where you've seen we get a higher density. You look at the apartment complex beside Sun Valley Animal Hospital, that's in the county. And so...
And that's Chestnut Lane.
I can't hear you from over there. That's okay. But so I like annexation, and this project is small, and of course, in that area of town, I've approved, since I've been on council, no apartments, and I understand that high-density argument. And so I'm good with this. It's an annexation, and appreciate our staff working with the county to bring this stuff, and I think we've established a better relationship with the county where we get annexation, and we don't get as high a density that has been approved in the past. So it's kind of a trade-off. And so, you know, so I'm okay with this, and that's all I got to say. I did want to see a picture of the houses. Do we have a picture of the houses? I don't know if I missed that. Maybe I was dozing off over here or something, I don't know.
I thought this stuff was so interesting to you. Okay, so there's three different slides right here.
All right. Okay. That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, what's the price range?
Mr. Gay.
Prices is mid-five, between four or five hundreds, and then it's about 26 to 32 square foot thousand.
I'd like to ask if the property owners have researched maybe going commercial with this property. When I ran for office, all those folks over in that area were just sick to death with the congestion and everything else that they had to deal with over there. And sometimes you have to be a good neighbor and try to find something that works in the neighborhood that will give people jobs and keep people here in the town. I just, I promised the folks that I would not vote on higher density in that area. So I would, I'd like to have you consider maybe looking for some commercial projects for that area.
Anybody else? No.
That's a sign-up.
Actually, did you sign the...
I'm just, I'm her husband. I was just going to have a, just an alternate consideration is the timing. So you have multiple construction projects right there going at the same time. Our traffic on that road is 3X.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Can he come up? Are we going to let him speak? Is he going to come to the mic?
Take about a minute, because we've already...
Can I ask a question, sir? Yeah.
I'm going to tell you what. I think we heard your argument from your wife, and I appreciate it, but we have to reopen up the whole thing. So let's just...
Is that a challenge to reopen? Just so I can spend 30 seconds?
Mayor is the one running the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to just repeat what your wife said...
I'm not. I'm asking for an alternative consideration of timing. It's not a yes or no.
Can I get a motion to open up close?
I give a motion to open up.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion? Okay, got one.
Second.
Thank you very much for that. Again, I think it's a matter of timing, and it's a question for me now, because our traffic level is 3X. There's a lot of 3-axle vehicles going up and down that road all day. You will, the neighborhood across the street has been under construction for a year and still has not one foundation built in that neighborhood. All I'm suggesting is, maybe we need to get some of these other projects further along before we open up yet another construction project, bringing in more 3-axle vehicles constantly in that neighborhood with lots of kids, lots of taxpayers, lots of families in that space. That road is crazy busy. I encourage you to drive that two miles and see how many new projects have been built on that two-mile road. That's all construction traffic. I would ask you to consider the timing of your approval on this, and maybe get some of these projects further along before we start adding more projects. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
All in favor? Unanimous. Brandy, if you could, I just have a question, and maybe I just don't understand it. Again, and I don't mean to be disrespectful when I say this, I'm just trying to communicate here. Really, who he, or who people need to ask this question to would be the property owners. I mean, it's their call. It's already, it's already zoned to have it done. I mean, it can be legally done. The county can come in there and start building those houses.
Correct. I do think that we can give them a little bit of relief. I'll let the developers speak on the timing, and that may help their questions and concerns.
Okay.
Yes, so even if y'all approve tonight, we are, we have to go through surveying the property, design, permitting. Best-case scenario, we're probably 11 months to a year, and it can be longer than that before any construction would actually happen. You also have the allocation for sewer and the county that we have to deal with, and right now, I'm sure y'all are well aware of where that is. We can't really project where that's going to be in a year when we're locked in. So it could be longer than a year before this would actually start, so.
I understand. And the only thing, the only reason I make these comments is I'm trying to protect the council somewhat, because we get such, so many people who get angry at us for approving something that we almost have to approve. I mean, you almost have to do it because it's already going to be done. I keep emphasizing the fact that this is going to be done whether we approve it or not. It's going to be done, and they're going to build one less house. So it's almost crazy if we don't approve it. We don't like it either, but it's already there. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over and ask for a, anybody else have a comment on that? Or, yes, Mr. Gay?
I mean, if I'm going to vote for something, you know, the promises I've made are for commercial, and that's what I've told people I would support in that area. I mean, it's a matter of principle with me that I keep my promise. And I think that the property owners would probably get more for their money if they looked at a commercial development rather than, I mean, we don't have to go with bringing it into the town. We don't have to approve the density there if we don't want to. If the county wants it, then let them take it. We need to stand ground here and push commercial and light industrial in this town to give people jobs, a place to work, and income, and that's...
Dennis, if I may, that all sounds real good, and it sounds like, you know, standing up and saying, hey, I'm, this is what I do. But it's the property, they own the property.
Well, they may well get more money if they go commercial.
It's not up to you to convince them what to put on their own property. It's their property. It's not your property. If they want to put something on their property, Dennis, that's up to them. Now, if you want to go talk to them and say, do you want to put commercial on there, and they say, no, I don't want to put commercial on there, it's up to them.
I understand your point, but...
It's not up to us for us to tell them what to put on their property.
I've asked for us to put on a development person to go get commercial, and we've done nothing, and that's the point I want to make tonight.
Well, it doesn't make any sense, in my opinion. Tom, go right here.
Yeah, Dennis, evidently, it's already been approved, so we can't change it. You know, they're not wanting to change it. They're wanting to build the 55, 57 houses. Unfortunately, it's been approved by the county, and we're just going to, we're here to annex it and to approve it on our end. And what the town benefits is just taxes. You know, we get taxed from those folks. Unfortunately, we can't change it to commercial. It's already been approved, and we're just approving it for Indian Trail.
And we have control over the quality of the homes that are in there.
Exactly.
It doesn't help our traffic situation.
Well, that's another, that's another problem we have all around the town of Indian Trail. We grew so rapidly. Infrastructure was something I ran on, is something that we're working with, but I tell you guys, government's slow, as y'all know, and it's taking time. It's going to take time for us to get these roads right.
If approving and denying was, you know, going to make this project not happen or happen, my decision might be different, but I think being able to have the town have control plays a little bit of a part, making sure that the quality of the homes stay consistent with the area. I would be scared to get that control up and find out what they put there. I mean, it could be an apartment complex, or condos, or, you know, something even higher density. I don't want them to build any more residential. I wish they would stop on all the different sides for a while. I don't totally agree with building more homes, but I do feel like in Indian Trail, giving us a little bit of that control is going to help maintain, you know, the quality of the area.
Agreed.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Can I actually make a couple of comments if it's okay with you? All right. So we have a simple choice before us, right? This project is already zoned. This is a by-right project. They can go in and build 55.8 houses. They're asking to build 57. The by-right also gives them the ability to put whatever they feel in terms of the material on the outside. Coming to the town, we have architectural guidelines that they have to follow. Correct, Ms. Deese? Thank you. So we are sitting here arguing about semantics and commercial, which commercial only is going to bring in the traffic. The people who own the land also have some rights, too. They were there when the other neighborhoods came around. They didn't come to Town Hall and fight and say, don't build it, right? So we have to look at that, too. Now, I'm not, if we want to get the open space, people want to do it, pull together, put your money, buy the land, keep it open. But the thing is, these people have rights, and the rights were afforded to them by the county to put 55.8, or to come and get into the town and build the houses. If they go to the county, the traffic's still going to be there, the people are still going to live there. But when we advocate for roads here on the council, we go put money up for roads, they're still going to be driving on the roads, but just not paying taxes. So it's a simple premise. I understand everybody's sights. There's not an easy way to win this or to get this done, right? It's difficult. Somebody's going to be unhappy tonight, and somebody's going to be unhappy. But the thing is, it's a very difficult proposition for us, not to mention, in 2019 when I came, on 2018 when I came to this council, these types of discussions never happened. These things were just approved by the county without any consultation with Indian Trail. I worked hard with the county commissioners to get them before these things were just approved or just zoned. Once they went over to the planning department, we worked hard to get them to speak to our planning department, to therefore to get them to incorporate, and therefore we have some control over it. I'd like less houses, too. There's houses in the back of where I live. But the thing is, these people have rights, and unless if I want to keep it open, I'm going to have to pony up some money to buy it, otherwise, we got to do what we got to do. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's get a, let's get a motion on annexation 165.
All right, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve annexation ordinance number 165.
All in favor? For, deny?
Against.
Mr. Gay voted against. Okay. It passes four to one. Next, I need, let's get a motion on ordinance adoption and consistency findings.
Can I ask a question, sir? Sorry, go ahead.
I would ask that you make a motion on the rezoning first, and then the consistency and reasonableness, so it matches with what your decision is on the rezoning. But I would also ask that you have the developer come up, and on page 41 and 42 of your packet are the 14 conditions, if Ms. Deese, if you can bring those up. And so the developer can state on the record that he will agree to those proposed conditions.
Okay. Would you come up and do that, sir?
Yes, so we, as a development group, do agree to these conditions.
Do you want to read, does he need to read them all?
Just real quick, we also have had them sign in writing, so the applicant has signed for these conditions as well. And we can go through those if council would like, but they're also up on the screen.
Does council want to go through those, through those? No? Okay, we're good. So what's my, now can I get a motion, or?
A motion for the rezoning.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the rezoning?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Brandy, I thought you said you had to read something for consistency findings. Is this the next one? You're going to have to come up and read some text, or that separate, or put the text up on the screen?
I've already bored you with that earlier, right here, just talking about being with the village plan and everything.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 06-14-2022, number 375, regarding the rezoning request for the Chestnut Single Family Project.
All in favor? We've got four votes, deny? Mr. Gay's against. Okay.
I'll make the last motion. I make a motion to approve the statement of reasonableness and consistency for ZM 2019-0094, as read into the record by staff.
Okay. Can I get a, in favor?
Attorney Cox, do we need to amend that motion because it was not read into the record as staff?
Let's go ahead and read it in.
Okay. If we could please have... You read all the, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. McIntyre, deny? Mr. Gay, deny. All in favor except for Mr. Gay. Okay.
Take a break.
Take a break.
Take a break? All right, let's take a five-minute break. ARPA and resulting town funds, that's Mr. McLamb, projects funding considerations discussion. Go ahead.
All right. How are y'all, mayor and council? Wow, it's loud. Okay. So here again tonight, just to give you all a little bit more of an update on where we are with ARPA and town funds. I know there's been a few questions coming from council to either myself or Mike in the last few days, which is a good thing. It allows us to give you all more information. So one thing that Jim and Ms. Cox are working on is working with the sheriff's office to get our contract language amended just slightly that we have to do for ARPA purposes, so they're working on that. If you remember, we opened a public comment period, and just a minute, we'll open up a public comment period if anybody here has any comments. But to date on that survey that we put out on the web, we have had 459 responses, which is a lot more than what I ever thought that we would have, and as a committee, we ever thought we would have. So that's been a really good thing. We have started as a committee, kind of pulling some of that information, kind of trying to see what all is in those comments. At the next council meeting, or maybe the one after that, within the next month, we'll present that information to y'all and kind of show y'all what people have asked for, kind of what they said as we walked through that process. We're going to not show y'all every comment unless, if y'all want more information, what we're planning on doing is grouping them in transportation, parks, public service, like those kind of groupings. So now, we're going to talk about a few projects that we had been working on. The first one is the fire trucks. So we have worked with the fire chiefs. We are waiting right now to receive their final specs for the truck. We have reached out to two different vendors for vehicles. And then from that, we'll end up selecting one vehicle company to purchase trucks through. That'll give us the most buying power that we can get when we go to purchase vehicles, not just one from one company and one from another company. The athletic associations are very grateful for council. They have both picked up their checks, so they are both going to start using those funds to serve the community. VFW, I am hoping to set up a meeting with the VFW commander next week to go over kind of some of the stuff that an agreement would house for them, for the items that we had discussed with them. The water lines, Mr. Barber mentioned earlier. He was so lucky to go to Union County and get wrangled into speaking at the county commissioners' meeting. They did ultimately approve the water line project with the town, so they will be a 50-50 partner with the town on that project. The county manager has reached out to Mike, and then both the county manager and Mike have pushed it forward to two other people. One of those is me, and Brian Matthews at the county are going to kind of be project leads, I guess you could call it, with our respective agencies on that project. We will be on that one, looking to reach out to those homeowners to set up some kind of public meeting. I think a couple of council members had mentioned that as well, to bring them in, to kind of show them what that process is going to look like, because it will not be a short process in designing a water line and getting it built and that kind of thing, helping them to understand that. I've got some good news, some different news for y'all tonight that y'all haven't had in a while. As a ARPA staff internal committee, we have started looking through some of those other projects that had been presented to us from council, or agencies had reached out to us. About two of those, we are going to be able to help. We are fine-tuning some of those details, and we will bring those back to council, if not at the next meeting, the meeting after that. That is Food for Families and Common Heart. We will be able to meet some of their requests that they have asked for. We are still reviewing some other projects that have come in. Those are Cameron's House of Hope. We actually have a meeting with them next week. The Boy Scouts Lions Club, Union West Rotary, and Back to School Bash. I'm hoping to get a request from Back to School Bash in the next couple of days. After that, I'll stand here and answer any questions.
Any questions, or no questions? Okay. We do, okay, go ahead.
Water line. When, I know that we're working through that agreement, understanding. If you had to give me a guess, and I'm not going to hold you to it, it's totally a guess, off the record, on the record. What, what, all things being equal, the county controls the process. When do you think that you could, this could actually start?
Don't shake your head, Brandy. I see you shaking your head, Brandy.
Well, no, the person I was looking for in the room, actually, is, I was looking for Todd, because I thought he could give me a...
Do you want to... Mr. McIntyre, would you like me to respond to that?
Oh, certainly, sure.
All right.
On the record, right?
On the record. When I spoke to the county manager, there were two things that we agreed on right from the start. One, this needs to be a high priority with the county.
Yep.
He wouldn't give me a date on that initial phone call. And two is that it would be good to have kind of a community meeting of those folks that are most impacted, and we'll, we'll let y'all know when that is, so we can start to do an FAQ, so that they understand a schedule and what their responsibilities are.
Okay, thank you.
What I'll add to that is, you heard what the developer just said while I go about, you have time on the front end, that you have to do that survey, you design, you have to plan it out, you have... So there's probably a year-long process of just that before it'll even get released for construction. So you, I mean, you're looking more than a year, less than three years, five years? You know what I mean? Like, you're, you're somewhere in that window.
So if I can just say one thing, and I'll turn it back to you. If we can just make sure that we communicate with the people clearly, just so that way, because they will, they will reach out to me, but I kind of like to follow them to you guys. I think I've done all I can, and just to make sure that we keep them informed, even if it's an update saying, "Hey, nothing new has happened," not meaning every month, but you know what I mean, every quarterly or something to that nature. That way, they know that the town staff is still on top of it, because we know you guys do a good job.
Thank you.
If I could add, and Adam, I don't want to, if I misspoke, tell me, but considering it's ARPA money, there are some deadlines where things have to be met, so that...
So this project is being done with town surplus dollars? So, yes, there are still deadlines, but not the ARPA deadlines, but yes.
Good point.
Any other questions? Okay, we don't, we don't have any public hearing, or anybody signed up on the public hearing sheet? No, we do not, so...
I'd still like to open it and close it.
Huh?
I would still like to open it and close it, though.
Okay, all right. I'd like to open and close. Can I get a motion to open and close?
A motion to open and close the public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, old business, comprehensive plan presentation. Ms. Deese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planning staff is so happy to present Town of Indian Trail 2041 Comprehensive Plan. I would be remiss if I did not thank both these gentlemen over here to your left. Tim was the project manager, and Tyler did some of the mapping, so thank you both guys for, for all your hard work on this. It's even more difficult with the volume that we've had over the last several years, so we appreciate council's patience as well with this process. So we have about 17,000 parcels. I figured we'd take them one by one, if that's okay with you guys?
Yeah.
No, we'll be brief with this, and then we can give you more detail if you, if you desire. So what is the comp plan, anyway? It provides a roadmap of growth typically for 10- to 20-year span. It helps provide support for zoning decisions, and North Carolina now requires that it's reasonably maintained, so they're going to keep us in check. And we were definitely due for, for an update, for sure. So one of the most important steps of the process was hearing from our residents. We sought input in several ways. One was a community survey completed in April of 2021. Just an example of one question, the survey was, "My vision for the future of Indian Trail is..." And some of the responses we received were adequate roads, sidewalks, infrastructure, other modes of transportation, small-town feel, suburban feel, community, rural, quaint, entertainment, dining, farmers' markets, commercial, shopping, industrial businesses and jobs, a need for a town center or downtown. We saw that quite frequently as well in the response. Entertainment and dining, commercial, shopping, a great place to raise a family, low crime, safe, good quality of life. And then there were some comments on recreation, outdoor-type community, lakes and parks. So it's just an example of one of the questions that we had. Here, we provided some general demographics with the draft plan, containing much more detail. You can see it on our website and dive into those details if you wish, but we'll highlight some of the, some of those here in this slide, looking at the growth from 2010 to 2040, and then the household makeup, size and age. So we're fairly young as a population, and almost 40% of our households are four people or greater. So really appreciate the advisory committee and their hard work on this and their focus. One of their recommendations to the town was changing and modifying the vision, the town goals, and the objectives. So, and they just, they dissected and debated that word for word. And then lastly, they provided a recommendation on what scenario they wanted to recommend to you as a council. So there were three scenarios that were, that were provided. One was the status quo, kind of keep our plan, our future land use map, like it is. Scenario two was conservative, so that's taken down some of those medium-high-density zones and downzoning those to lower-density residential. And then scenario three was aggressive. That's increasing the density and the commercial areas as well. So we were happy to see, we, quickly, I will tell you that the scenario two conservative model, it did, it did leave some areas with density, and we felt strongly as a planning staff about that. Your downtown, and then your 74 corridor, low-density residential is simply not appropriate, in our opinion, on those areas, so. The, the good thing for us is that the consensus that we got from council initially, as well as the advisory committee, is that everyone wanted to go with the conservative model. So we appreciate you guys making it easy for us. Here's just an up-close of that conservative model. So you can see the blue is where there was less intense uses, lower density. The purple would be where it was increased, and you see that on the map, there is no purple. And then the goldish color just reflects no change in intensity or density. So what are we getting from this update? Revisions to the town vision, goals and objectives, updates to basic demographics, changes at the parcel level for the future land use map to become the conservative scenario, and we now have an edible GIS data. This is a large amount of detailed work, and we also have clarified the report to make it easier to read, or as easy as planning language can be to read. So what's next? Planning board will provide feedback on June 21st. We will receive council's feedback and questions tonight, and also through the next few weeks. Staff's proposing adoption on June 28th, but if council finds they need more time, we're happy to accommodate that. Thank you for your time, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Do we still have villages? We used to have the concept of the villages.
Yes.
And so if you have a village, then it just makes sense that we, and I keep pushing commercial, light, industrial, but, I mean, if you have a village, then you put things to sustain your village, such as you try to get shopping centers, some office buildings, restaurants, that sort of thing. And so, and I get back to our business, maybe as business development person here in town, I've always pushed that. So I would just like to make that comment about our planning. If we're going to have villages, let's make them villages. Let's help make them sustainable with, with services around them, that kind of thing.
Yes, so we, we have the villages listed here on the map. We did take a few away in areas where stallings had encroached in on us, and those villages, kind of the planning area changed. Monroe took a little bit on the north side. Stallings took a little bit in other areas, being a little bit more aggressive in the past. But those villages are there, largely the market dictates the commercial and light industrial. I wish we had a magic wand, but we don't.
And that was difficult to do.
Yes.
I got my hand up. It's good, you know, just want to make sure. Got credit for getting my hand up, okay. You know, so, no, I think this is great, as, just so the public know, is, you know, we hear a lot of stuff about density and commercial and different things, but we went into this, and my thinking was, is the biggest way to have smart growth and control some of the, you know, limit some of the high density was through the comprehensive plan. So that y'all listen to previous council and current council, then, you know, we started this, you know, before, and I, I think it's great, and I know Mr. Jones has done a lot of work on this, and that's Tim Jones, not Tom Jones, right? Okay, yeah. No relation. Maybe you can sing, I don't know. But the, anyway, you know, I like the conservative. Understand legally, you just can't make wholesale changes and, you know, and just take things off the map, but we can make little changes here and there, and it looks like we've done a great job of that. So, you know, I'm really pleased. I mean, we, I know this has been a long process. Was it been two years? And so, I mean, so to be able to come up with the roadmap of the town that kind of gives us a little, scale back some of the high density and hopefully let the infrastructure roads and different things in the county with the water and sewer catch up, I just think it's a great roadmap, and I just want to say thank you to you and your department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. Brandy, I want to say the same thing. Thanks for y'all's hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it was a team effort. Y'all, y'all, the town has a great team. I've, I've seen it in many different actions and ways, and I appreciate you, and thank you for all you, all you've done.
Thank you.
Marcus?
Brandy, a quick question for you. When was the last time the comprehensive plan was updated?
2013. It was updated, the original was 2005.
All right. How often do you recommend we update this on a go-forward basis?
I can take it, whichever one.
Yeah, I mean, depending...
Excuse me, council and mayor. Typically, it's in, you know, in the planning arena, it's usually about every five years as a rule of thumb to generally follow, but it all depends on the development within your own area. So if things change quicker, you may do it sooner than that. But updates can also be made along the way.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to, well, wait a minute. We got to do a budget, the budget ordinance adoption. Can I get a motion? Somebody, Marcus?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 22-23 budget, budget ordinance 6-14-2022, number 011.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to new business. Carolina Courts. I know you've been waiting, so I know you're ready. Come on up. Robin Jones and Anthony George. Mr. McClellan, do you have anything to say? I had your name beside there. I apologize, I just now read it.
A smart city manager told me one time, "If you already got the votes, why stand up and talk about it?" So thank you for approving the budget ordinance. Tax rate stays 18 and 1/2 cents. You do have a memo in your file for Carolina Courts, and I'll leave it to y'all.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm Robin Jones. This is Anthony George. We are owners of Carolina Courts, which is directly across the street from the Town Hall. We are a youth basketball and volleyball facility. Primarily what we do, we also do pickleball during our morning hours. We do summer camps. We do do some events outside of basketball and volleyball. We host the Back to School Bash at our facility, and some other events. We've had some for the Town of Indian Trail, such as the pow-wow. We've had some for the Town of Indian Trail, such as the pow wow and some movie nights and things like that in our building. But primarily, we do the youth basketball and volleyball with our tournaments and stuff on the weekends. So we host a lot of kids from Union County. Most of our customer base is Union County. So, and that's most of our staff even are teenagers that all go to Sun Valley High School, Porter Ridge, a lot of the schools right here in our area. So we're very heavily catered towards our Union County Indian Trail kids.
I'm Anthony George. I've been with Carolina Courts for about a decade now. Owner since two thousand and eighteen, it'll be four years in September. I was a Indian Trail resident for about seven years. And I moved, it's funny, I used to see the crossing guard. I used to live at Holly Parks, I saw the crossing guard all the time. So it was really cool to see him and him get his due. But I moved to Waxaw and, yeah, we've been there for ten years. I played college basketball, coached college basketball and started working at Carolina Courts because college basketball wasn't paying. Mommy wasn't giving me money anymore and college coach wasn't paying. So found Carolina Courts, loved it, moved my family down here. We've been down here ever since. And I have, I have a four-year-old little girl and a two-year-old boy. And we've been down in, like you said, Charlotte since two thousand and eleven. I went to school at Belmont Abbey in Gastonia and just stayed down ever since. So we love it here and really love being, having this business in Indian Trail. It's been an awesome experience for us. So that's pretty much just what I was doing.
Any questions?
I do, I have a couple. Um, so I, I was at your place on this past weekend. I'm going to come again on Saturday. I have a couple of questions for you. What are some of the challenges that you guys see when you host the tournaments? Because we know that there's, Hayden's sitting in the back, we have flag football on sometimes Fridays and also on Sundays. What are some of the challenges that you see as a business owner in Indian Trail? And what can the council kind of do to help alleviate that? Is that something that the council can address? Or do you have any other ideas around how you can address some of those challenges?
I got, yeah, obviously, it, the town is growing and expanding so quickly and, and, and so just very fast. It's, it's been very fast. I think, like to your point, with multiple things going on inside of Chestnut Park, there are challenges on certain days for parking spaces. I think parking is, is a huge issue right now. We've had meetings with the Town of Indian Trail Parks and Rec and trying to figure out some solutions, and we're working through that. I think the biggest thing we see right now is when there is a major event going on inside the park, along with what we do on the weekends as far as our events. There are, there are, there's been a handful of dates where we've, we've had some issues. You know, when we were, when we built the facility in that park, it was, it was just our facility. And I think that's where we're now seeing with multiple things going on, with all the construction as long, as well as the, the new football field and kind of flag football, soccer. Sand volleyball's been super, like, it's been great, people coming and playing. There's been some issues on, on those Sundays. That is the biggest, I would say, as far as like where we see the challenges as far as a business, like on those weekends. But, you know, I, I, not much more space you could do to put parking spaces out there. I think that's, that's our, I think our biggest challenge.
So we've, based on that, you said that you had some conversations with Parks and Recs. Maybe one of the things we could do also is to let some of the members or the visitors that come to your place as well know that they could also park at town hall. That's available, right Hayden, in terms of a communication? And then the second question I have, and I'm not going to ask all the questions, hopefully you guys have some. The, there is an agreement with the town and Carolina Courts from its original construction with the, with the, I won't say donation, but the gift in exchange of. I know that the pandemic made it very difficult, right, to kind of have those hours. But how, how are you guys going to address this? Because here's, here's why I ask that. Your peak time is on Saturdays, Sundays, that's when you have a lot of teams playing tournament. You can't have an open gym because you kind of need all the space you, you need for the teams, right? Because you're running a business essentially. But during the week, do you have any time available, like in the evenings? Because I know that there's times that are open gym, one to four. And for those who are listening or may not know, I think the agreement states that if you are a resident of Indian Trail, mainly not just living within the town limits, but actually pay, you pay per town property taxes, you are entitled to get some open gym. I think it's, I can't remember what the amount is. But how can, during the week, how can we meet that agreement that the town has with you based on the land at a time past four? Because most people who may want to use the gym may not necessarily be in there from one to four. It's not, you know, maybe the younger kids. But how can we do that while you guys still effectively run your business and have your teams practice and so on?
I'll let, I'll let Robin answer that.
Yes, so I can kind of answer that. So it, everything we do is very seasonal. So, you know, right, right now, we're finishing up our spring season and heading into our summer season. So as our seasons change, all of our scheduling changes. So right now, actually, with summer camps that we're doing right now in the morning, our open gym, we're doing Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from three to five. And then on Friday, it's going to be one to nine. And then, so we're still kind of in that tournament season, which will kind of lighten up in July. And then our weekends will become open. And so when our weekends become open, we'll do open gym on the weekends. So it's really, really.
It's cyclical.
Yes, it's, it really depends on what all's going on. And believe it or not, our open gym is, we don't get a lot of younger kids. It's more college age and up. And I'm still getting pretty big crowds even from one to four, believe it or not. But what we do, we do try to get the programs, you know, like I said, on Friday, during the summer, we're open, we're going to run open gym. On the weekends, when I don't have events, I will run open gym. So we do have our open gym whenever we can, get it in there.
All right, and the last question. Is there anything that the town, the council can do for you guys? Because you're a small business, right? And our goal is to promote business. I mean, there are a lot of people who come in, think this weekend I met some people who came in from Raleigh. There are people who come from Maryland, all over to play basketball. But is there anything that the town can do to help your business? Or, I don't know what ideas you have, but is there anything that we could be doing for you to assist, to make sure that the business is viable? One of the things I know the past council did was approve a hotel out on the front. I think that's still in the works, if I'm not mistaken. But is there anything that the town can do for you in that regard?
Anybody want to build a parking deck? I mean, I, I, the town's great. We work a lot with Hayden. And he's, Hayden's great, by the way. I, I can pick up the phone and call him at any time and he answers the phone. He's awesome. So, I mean, we work really close with Hayden, coordinate dates and, and get as much of our scheduling together as we possibly can.
So your biggest need, you're saying, is parking, right? That's, that's really what's going to help.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the council was a couple of weeks ago took up the case that, that Mr. Hunsinger, right? We're working on trying to alleviate some of that over there. But outside of that, you guys are good, you're saying?
Currently, I think things are going well. Obviously, like to your point, like, you know, COVID's still here, but we're, we're working through it. Kids are showing up, parents are showing up. It's been really, really good. I, I just think right now, that's our biggest challenge. And it really, like I said, it's a handful of dates when we have things going on at the same time. During the week, what's been great and, you know, we, we just, we, we really do, and to Robin's point, working with Hayden's been awesome. And, and since I've been an owner, it's been pretty much working exclusively with Hayden and it's been really, really good. And he's been super supportive and we try the same way to be supportive of him when he's asking anything. So, but yeah, no, I don't think anything extra.
All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Anybody else? I have a couple of quick questions and hopefully quick answers.
Do y'all allow dunking during open gym?
You can dunk.
No, he can't.
I want to see this.
I was going to say, that eliminates me. Anyway, that's the only question I have. He, he probably wants to go dunk a ball.
Whenever you want.
Real quick, are you still the owners in Concord or is that separate?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
You're, and is it just the two?
Just the two.
Okay. How many people a year do you think come in?
Through the doors?
At one time, there was an estimate, you know, a, a big number of people came into Carolina Courts.
Mayor, what I, what we can do is I could, we can go through it, we can give you a really good.
No, I don't want you to, I just want you to guess. At one time, I'd heard a hundred thousand people.
I, I would tell you it would be north of that.
North of a hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
So you're bringing in a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand people.
I think per facility. Per facility, so like at each location, a year. Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. And I think that's great. And that brings a lot of good things to the town. And, and I, and I remember when you built it and I remember when it got torn down and the whole nine yards. So, very good. And I know, how's your pickleball doing? How?
Pickleball's great. I, I, pickleball is the number one growing sport in the entire country at every age. I mean, people kind of pigeonhole it for like senior citizens. We have, we have pickleball players from sixteen, seventeen years old that come through, all the way through eighty-five, ninety years old. So it's growing so rapidly. But we, obviously, our number one, our number one goal is our, is our youth development. So we try our best with those hours with those, with those folks and, you know, it's, it's, it's.
How many days a week do you do pickleball?
Cyclical. Right now, it's one, but every, during not summer days, it's three to four days a week.
And it's morning, right?
It's in the morning, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've come, I've actually come a couple of times and, and never won a game, so I never came back.
Got beat by an A-12. You got beat by an A-12.
Yeah, I, I never have won a game, so I said, I'm never coming back. But hey, you do a great job and, and we're glad you're there. And, and thank you for all you do for the community too. I appreciate it. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Board and committee appointments. All right. Let me find my sheet. All right. Haven't done this yet, but I think we'll just go one by one, seat one of the top of the sheet and ask for a motion. Okay. All right. The very top one, seat one. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll go seat one.
Okay, seat one, go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Judith Silverquit to seat number one on the ABC board with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, you want to keep on going, Todd, or do you?
I'll do the next one.
We can make one fluid motion, Mr. Barber, one fluid motion for all of them if you'd like.
What's she say?
You can do a motion for all of them if you like, is what she said.
And keep in mind, one of those is twenty twenty-three.
Beg your pardon?
One of those is twenty twenty-three.
One of those is twenty twenty-three, okay.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Jaharda Washington to seat number two. Aaron Cunningham to seat number six. Jennifer Mahir to seat number seven on the board of adjustments with the term expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Unanimous. Anybody else? We're good? All right.
Leave the Parks and Rec. Somebody else want to do that? All right.
Magintar.
I make a motion to appoint Steve Dodson and Brian Olin to the Parks and Recs with an expiration date, a term expiration, sorry. Steve Dodson to seat number two, Brian Olin to seat number five with an expiration date of six thirty twenty twenty-five. And Elizabeth Del Rosario Baker, seat number four, expiration term of six thirty twenty twenty-three.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
I'll take the next one. Make a motion to appoint Ms. Cynthia Wiley, seat planning board, seat number six. Mr. Larry Dukes, planning board, seat number four. And Mr. Sidney Sandy, seat number three, with an expiration, expiration date of six thirty twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve? Motion? Okay, deny? Four to one with Mr. Gay voting against.
And I'll make a motion, the last motion, for the Stormwater Committee. Francis Gibbs, seat number two. Alan Mosley, seat number five, with an expiration date of six thirty twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. That was easy. All right, thank you. Downtown master plan contract approval with Withers Ravinell, Ms. Deese.
Okay, last time. So we heard from council that you guys were interested in perhaps updating our downtown master plan. It is very dated. It's originally adopted in two thousand and six. I think it is very important to update, but even especially so with the Indian Trail Road Project coming in to lay that foundation. This will provide rules and regulations and guidelines for, for that development that I think that that road will foster. We're happy with the contract price and the timeframe. So Withers and Ravinell has submitted a quote, twenty-eight weeks for the timeframe and a contract amount of eighty-eight thousand seven hundred. And I did want to point out, we can click on where it says downtown master plan in the green. What we got previously is somewhat unique, I haven't seen it before. But we basically, we have good bones, but it's just a, a pamphlet style in that PDF. So it's just a two-page, eleven by seventeen, whereas normally you have a bounded book with a little bit more information. So thank you, Abby, for that. We're just requesting council give us the permission to execute that contract. Thank you.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract with Withers Ravinell in the amount of eighty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars regarding the downtown master plan.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Navajo Connection CIP ordinance, six fourteen twenty-two fifteen, Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, council here tonight to ask for approval to move forward with a roadway project that we've talked to y'all individually about and had a, had some closed session meetings to talk about right away. But basically, for the, for the public, this road is an additional leg off of the roundabout. If the citizens go to our website, you can see the concept of the complete street in downtown. There's a roundabout there on the plan in front of the, the new commercial center, mixed-use center, commercial residential called the Town Center. We are proposing a additional leg to that road, so, I mean, to that roundabout. So the roundabout's got three legs right now, one to Town Center and obviously the two along Indian Trail Road. And we are proposing a one north, north, and northerly western direction off that roundabout for the purpose of giving access to local businesses that are challenged due to the fact that roundabout has to be built. So I will say that unfortunately, I've been going back and forth with our consultants because I needed to get a soils, geotechnical soil borings for that roadway. And I didn't get, I couldn't get the price in time for the agenda packet. So right now, as in the ordinance, you see a design phase at sixty thousand. I need to bump that up to seven thousand, which would make the total project price from one three three five zero 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 to one three four two zero zero zero. So the motion for approval would be for one million three hundred forty-two thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, can I get a, any questions first? None? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance zero six dash one four dash two zero two two, number zero one five, regarding the Navajo Connection CPO with a price of one million three hundred forty-two thousand dollars.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Agency donation policy change, Mr. McLaurin.
As I mentioned, it seems like every year.
As I mentioned, it seems like every year we waive the policy for agency donations, and so we want to see if you just want to permanently remove the two-year limitation. So we just need a, a vote to do that, since it's a policy.
Everybody thumbs up or thumbs down, let's look.
We got, we can make a motion.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll do that. I make a motion to approve the change of the agency donation policy to remove the time restriction for donations.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Facilities rental agreement update information, Ms. Cox.
Good evening, there's a memo in your packet, it starts on page one hundred and twenty. It's on, and in it, we just summarized some recommended changes to the current facilities agreement. One thing was the General Assembly, I believe in twenty fifteen, said you can no longer collect privilege license tax, it referenced that in the agreement, so we want to remove that language. Also, because there are commercial rentals from time to time wherein people are trying to sell products or services in order to avoid any confusion that the town is sponsoring or endorsing the activity or product because it is held in Town Hall, we recommended putting up a, a sign so the attendees know that it's not endorsed or sponsored by the town of Indian Trail. We wanted to add some language about the requirement, if we get requested to have a precinct meeting by one of the political parties, that we would, by statute, allow that because we have to. And then the last, I think that was it, just a statement that the user is confirming that the information on their application is accurate and true, and that they will agree with all of the town's conditions.
Any questions?
We need a motion, or just consensus?
Yeah, we can bring it back to you, and then you can approve the revisions to the policy, but just a consensus, and I didn't know if there needed to be any discussion.
Have you got your hand raised, or your thumb up?
Thumb up.
Okay, all right. All right, okay, everybody got their thumb up, so we'll, we'll pass that on, and we'll do it another next meeting or whenever. Thank you. CSX road, railway crossing repair, Mr. Hunsinger.
By the way, I didn't get any recognition for the comprehensive plan, so appreciate it, Brandy.
Man.
Hey, hey, that was a big job, Marcus, that was a big job.
That was just low, man, that was just wrong, man, it was just wrong.
Lot of afternoons on that thing, and unfortunately, I didn't get any, so anyway, um, we have been working with CSX, and I apologize, this has taken so long. I think we started talking to these folks, Lord knows, four or five months ago, but they finally got the estimate ready, and what we're doing, obviously, is we're trying to remove the existing asphalt and timber, timber post, if you want to call them that, out of the crawl scene and put concrete in there, which will obviously last longer and be of a better rideability. So there's, they came up with the estimate, so I, I didn't question it, because I'm not into railroad business, so the estimate's for eighty-two thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars, and we would like the motion for approval, so they can get started on scheduling and getting everything going for that project.
Todd, I just wanted to have a question with the complete road project.
Yeah.
Will this go with our design, you know, we won't have to do any alterations, per se?
No, because they're just concentrating on the top portion of the, the two-rail system that's on the top of the railroad. What our project will do will, is basically tie in, you know how, the two, two basic, um, eastbound and westbound lanes, it's a pretty elevated elevation to that railroad crossing. We're hoping to alleviate that a little bit, because we're adding a little bit of elevation to the existing road, so you will have a smoother transition as well, just getting over the railroad tracks itself. So it's a kind of a two-phase project in that sense. Yes, Dennis?
Okay, so we own the downtown road, the town does, correct, but the railroad still owns railroad tracks, don't they?
Correct, but we, we've got a permit through our project to be able to tie into that, to that, so.
Just a question, so I know, how come we have to pay for the repairs and make a better crossing there rather than the railroad?
Because they, they consider the damage not due to their trains, but to, due to vehicles.
Okay.
So they, they said the town needs to fix it because of that. Marcus?
I was ready to make the motion, but.
Oh, okay.
There's any more questions?
Okay.
I'll wait for the mayor to say that.
No, I'm just all happy, it turned out to be concrete, it's just simple repairs, I think it's better in the long run.
Yeah, yeah, they, I mean, again, we should, they should never have to come back and fix that, at least for most of these people living in this room right now.
Thank you, Todd.
You don't get any phone calls in the future, how about that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to adopt the contract with CSX to repair the railroad, railway crossing on Indian Trail in the amount of eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
All in favor?
And I will try to get a schedule and everything, and, and update the, the town manager as I can, so that y'all can man the phone calls, because I've, I've gotten several complaints as it is, and I've tried to tell these folks, we're at the mercy, so, yeah.
Once this is approved, when do you think they could do, start the repairs?
Yeah, well, again.
As we're at their mercy?
Yeah, 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 I don't know what their schedule's going to be, but I'm, I'll try to get that from them once we give them the signed contract.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
No discussion items, no close, no more close, managers update, Mr. McLaurin.
Well, we, we have item H mail.
I missed one.
Yeah, H as in Harry.
Okay, is that the one we?
It's the meetings.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on my, my.
Change the dates.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that was the one we added, and I don't have it on mine, so apologize. Okay, to discuss the, where's the agenda there, okay, right there, okay. Do you guys want to discuss the meeting process, right, here we go, meetings in July and August. Do you guys want to have a discussion on that? Originally, I had nothing to do with it, but you guys chose two dates in July and August where you askedered that you may not have a meeting that month, so.
I think what the proposal is, is we eliminate the second meeting in each month of July and August. So that's what, you know, I think.
Okay, so that's what it's about, all right, and.
Just need a motion, I think.
I just have a, I have a curiosity question for, and I'm, and I just, we, let's just do it, because I, my, my question was, and I think staff, and we do this for staff, and we do it for everybody, but the second meeting in August is school has already started, so it's kind of like it's nice to, it would be nice if, if the first meeting, and don't have to do it, it's just thinking this way, the first meeting be canceled, and that way, if you have children, you get to go on vacation. If you wait till the end of, with, with children, and the reason I know that, I don't have children that young anymore, but when I did, we had to, we had to go before the last meeting in, in August, so. Is that worth discussion, or, or not?
Need a motion.
Huh?
Only thing I have against the, the July one, it's close to my birthday, and I was hoping for everybody, you know, wish me a happy birthday, that's the only thing I hate about missing it, yeah.
Yeah, we got free cake.
I'm playing, I'm just playing.
It looks like school starts on the twenty-ninth, so.
Well, it depends, there's some schools starts on the seventeenth, eighteenth, whenever, so. It, it depends on what, I guess, school district you're in, I really don't care, I just thought I'd bring that up for, for thought, if anybody wants to, or we can just vote on that motion, so. Somebody bring it up for, Mr. McIntyre, you have, you have children, that's the only reason.
I do, I, I'm, I'm gonna, Mr. Barber's leading that effort, I'll, I'll go with the flow.
Okay, somebody make a motion, we'll, we'll, we'll counsel the two meetings and.
So the, the, what, what we're saying is we'll, we'll cancel the July twenty-sixth and the August ninth. One, one second, one second, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned something about the second meeting in August.
The only problem I see with that is they run back to back, and then, then you have a long period of time where you don't have a meeting, so that, that's a problem also. You almost have to change both meetings both ways, or just leave them the same, which, again.
So what you, what, what are you saying, the second meeting each month?
I'm saying what we just make a motion and pass it, and, and don't worry about it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to hold only one regular council meeting in each of the months, July and August, to be held on July twelfth and August ninth.
All in favor? Four votes, unanimous?
No.
No, you're against it?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's got, Dennis gave, Dennis votes against it. Okay, all right, four to one. All right. That brings us to, I'm sorry, managers update, Mr. McLaurin.
You've got in your agenda package an update of our projects that we're doing, you know that the land design report will be on June twenty-eighth, and they're focusing on two properties with bubble, what they call bubble design, and once we do that, we'll present that to y'all for information, along with options for the other land that you own. You'll take that document and then decide which property you want to focus on. Chestnut Park, Board Member McIntyre was very helpful in providing some information to McAdams, as they've started to work on that. We do have streetlights coming to Highway seventy-four, it's been a long road, we're, we're entering the final stretch on that. Once they do the photometric plan that's approved by DOT, and we do have the, we're expecting the specs for the generator. Watershed, again, that's a thirteen-month study that's being conducted, we expect to see some recommendations come out during that time that you are free to implement. We're excited that the Indian Trail Park Stormwater Improvement Project has been done, if you haven't been by there, take a look at it, it's on the right as you're going out on Old Monroe Road. They were working on that when I came here almost two years ago. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, First Avenue is still underway, and they're still making progress on that. Complete Street, we've talked enough about that tonight, Phase Two on Chestnut Square Park is under the design, and also Phase Three, we've had some delays because some of the property owners have acquired attorneys. We're trying to negotiate some, paying for some right-of-way on that property. The resurfacing is coming along, both for FY twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two, and the Shady Bluff roadway design is in the final stages. Adam has also asked me to let you know that we are looking for four people in public work, so if you know someone that wants to have a career in local government, if you will let Adam or myself know, we'll be happy to, to reach out. If I might, Mr. Mayor, let me just kind of recap, because y'all have done a lot of work tonight in a little bit of time, and just as, as part of our action items, you've had two donations, Poplin Elementary and Back to School Bash, so we're out of money for outside donations. Mr. McIntyre, we'll keep the residents informed on the water lines to make sure that gets done. The comp plan will be coming back to you on the twenty-eighth. We will put the agency donation policy that I just mentioned on the consent agenda for the twenty-eighth, and we will bring you a rental agreement update that will also be placed on the consent agenda. We are meeting on July twelfth and July ninth, and we have canceled the other two. In the event some emergency comes up where we have to have a special meeting, we will let you know, and we will also keep you informed when the railroad comes out. That's all I've got.
So just one second, Mr. Mayor, you said July ninth, you meant August ninth, right?
August ninth, thank you so much, it was a test, and you called it, and you got a hundred percent.
Just making sure.
Thanks, sir.
Very good, that brings us to, and thank you, Mike, to council comments.
Ms. Paul. I just want to thank everyone for coming out, I'm going to make it short, it's been a long meeting, but I think our staff's done a great job, thank everyone for coming out to the Family, Family Fun Festival this past weekend, it was great, Hayden, you did a great job, as well as the rest of the staff. Thank you, Mike, for all your hard work, and Kathy, and Abby, and everyone else, and drive safe. Mr. McIntyre?
You sure you want me to go now, because I do have something that I'm going to read, you want to leave me for last, or I can go now?
If you want to pass.
I want to, I want to pass, but I want to get it back. All right, yeah, let, let everybody speak, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak last, if you don't mind, I have something that I'd like to read out.
So we're, we can go ahead and leave after you start.
Mr. Barber?
Oh, okay, well, first off, I'll remind everybody, we have a July fourth parade, we still taking applications, you can still put in application for the float, what time's parade start, Aiden?
Eleven-thirty step off.
Eleven-thirty step off, be led by the esteemed honorable Captain Kevin James in the golf cart, he's always first up, so, get out of the way, is the saying. I want to wish everybody Happy Father's Day, I was very fortunate to have good parents and a good dad, and a lot of people be less offended, and, you know, be a little tougher if they had my parents, I can tell you, so, you know. For those of us that grew up that way, we were talking about that, you know, it's like, yeah, I'm not offended easy, thank you, parents, so anyway, I had a good dad. We have the June seventeenth over here, this Friday, at the park right over here, starts at six P M. at the Crossing Pass Park, that. So I also would like to give a shout-out, and understand that the DOT just announced, we got over in areas of Rogers Road and Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, there'll be paving neighborhood roads and all that. I live over there, so I'd like to thank our CRPO rep, and for going over there and fighting for us to get this money and my road to be repaved. It shows when you show up at the meetings and your voice, and I know a lot of people don't know this, but Ron Poppus, the mayor of Waxall, and is the chair, and he's working with our esteemed mayor, and it looks like it's paying off, you know, so. You sit, you know, and matter of fact, I know our town, so we got Brandon Oaks on the town roads coming up for resurfing, so, you know, so the roads are getting better in Indian Trail, and hey, I'm happy about that. So anyway, everybody have a nice evening, thanks for coming out.
Mr. Eric?
Yeah, just Happy Father's Day to everyone, long meeting, I'll shut up, God bless y'all, have a good night.
Mr. Gay?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, you know, when I vote, I vote the way that I promised the people that I would vote, and on my campaign sign, it said, "For the People," so it's not necessarily always for money in the town, it's for protect the, the way of life of the citizens here in the town, and they're the ones who pay all of our bills. Also feel strongly that if we're paid to go to two meetings a month, and the town pays us, the citizens are the one who pay it, that we should, we should work those times. So I hope everybody has a wonderful Father's Day, and be safe going home. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, um, so, just please bear with me for a minute. On June nineteenth in eighteen sixty-five, General Gordon Granger, Union General, arrived in Galveston, Texas, and he was there to inform enslaved African-Americans that they were free and that the Civil War had ended. That was approximately two months after the Civil War ended, but about, but more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. Last year, in twenty twenty-one, President Biden signed a bill that was passed by the Congress officially recognizing June nineteenth as a U.S. federal holiday. That's almost, or more than a hundred and fifty years after that day. On June nineteenth, and June nineteenth is, it's called Juneteenth because that happened in June, happened on the nineteenth, so merged together called Juneteenth. These days, it is an opportunity for reflection on the history of this holiday and the significance that it holds in the hearts and minds of many African-Americans. I also want to recognize the town of Indian Trail, who last year, before the federal government acted, Indian Trail approved this holiday for their staff, their entire staff, before the federal government officially recognized this as a holiday. On Friday, June seventeenth, six P M. at the Crossing Paths Park, there will be a celebration. The official holiday is going to be recognized on the twentieth of June, which is next Monday, because June nineteenth falls on a Sunday. For those of us who've never been to Texas, this is a very significant holiday in Texas in the way that it's celebrated, even more so now that it is. that it is a federal holiday. And I want to leave you with a fun, or I shouldn't say a fun fact, but an unknown fact, or little-known fact. The Emancipation Proclamation that was issued on January 1st, 1863, two years, more than two years before Juneteenth, was actually the second emancipation of this proclamation. President Abraham Lincoln actually issued one on September 22nd in 1862, right? So think of back then, people living under those times, and how long it took us to get to that point. So it's a time for reflection. I know that sometimes there's a lot of division on other things that happen within our country or society. But some words in the Constitution that I do, you know, me, learning the Constitution, reading it, I do really take to heart is "in search of a more perfect union." That's all we, that's all we can do. Every day, try to be better people, be better citizens. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Appreciate everybody tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. Thank you for serving in the town, agreeing to serve. And everybody have a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Do you want to announce my name, or do you just want me to start talking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank everybody for, for the way they handled and had Parker come down here today. Man, what a sweetheart. You guys were wonderful, council, staff, everybody. Hopefully, it'll be a day she will always remember, and it was very nice. I appreciate every one of you. Everybody sitting in this room was very special. And it mean a lot to her, and it mean a lot to her family, and hopefully she'll save those pictures. And I bet she keeps that Parker sign until she's past married.
She's there, all the, all the goodies she got.
Yeah, and Abby, thanks, thanks so much for, for your help, and it was great. And I'd just like to say, we hadn't had a meeting since Family Fun Day. Have we? We haven't. You looked, you looked puzzled. You scared me. I might have missed a week in there somewhere. But no, Hayden was marvelous. And one thing, too, that I learned about Family Fun Day is that the, they asked for volunteers from the staff, and all, just about everybody volunteered. And I think that's fantastic. That says something about you guys, and thanks again for volunteering and making that one, one very special day. It was fantastic. I got to tell you one quick story about it. My wife told me I had my little partner, Braden, with me, six years old. I took care of him all day, and the biggest worry she had about him was, don't let him out of your sight. And so I didn't. But at the very end, he saw Adam picking up trash with one of those things and, that picks up trash. And he said, Mr. David, he said, can I, can, can we do that? So I asked Adam, and I said, Adam, can we, and he said, take over and start picking up trash. And he said, sure. So sure enough, we did. And Braden's going around picking up trash, and I'm doing it for him. And we get all the way down, and I see Marcus there. So I stop, and we start talking to Marcus, and we get to talking, and all of a sudden, I said, well, you know, I need to take this bucket back up to where the staff is. It's full of trash. So I took it up there, and I set it down, I set the bucket down, and I went, where's the little thing that, that picks up? I said, oh my God, where's Braden? And he was gone. And, and Hayden looked at me, and he goes, I got the, I'm getting the sheriff's right now, and we're running down through there, and I'm screaming, Braden, Braden. I turn around, he'd been standing, talking to Marcus and them the whole time.
For the record, I didn't take him. He just stood next to me. For the record.
Anyway, that, that teaches you, I mean, can't find your garbage thing, you might be missing a child. But anyway, so I got through that one without getting killed. But we have, like we said, it's a couple of upcoming events. We got the Juneteenth. We also have the July 4th parade, which I very, very much look forward to. Very kind words from you, Mr. Barber, about the streets. I do have an email into the chairman of the Finance Committee at DOT, thanks to Abby, thanks to Todd, thanks to Jim, and even thanks to Marcus for helping me get all the information into, on that, and I'll keep you updated on it. So hopefully, hopefully that'll, that'll go very well. With that being said, I hope to see you next time, and everybody have a good rest of the week and, and rest of the June. We are coming, we're at one more meeting in June. It's July the, we don't.
28.
28, okay. All right. With that, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous.